To the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, good morning. Welcome to the Verbiage meeting on October 11th. Uh, approve one minute, please.
Make a motion to approve the minutes from last week's meeting.
Second.
Good. In discussion, all in favor, aye? Commander Eric.
There is also one special meeting yesterday.
Okay, make a motion to approve the, uh, minutes for the, uh, special meeting that was yesterday also.
Second.
Nelson.
It's hard to hear, so I don't know if your microphones are on.
Now they are. Mine is now. It wasn't you. Thank you. How'd you know that was so quick? I got a speaker outside.
Did get about three tenths of an inch of rain, so that's, that's a positive. At the shop, that's what we received.
Yeah. And I got up about four. It was coming down a little bit.
Yeah.
Okay, your turn, Eric.
All right. Asphalt update. We've, uh, produced enough quarter inch chips in the last week, we believe, to be able to continue with, uh, grand from 255 to 739. We think we can do that now in one, one pass, and then we will move to the lake and, and produce more chips and get that laid as well. The quarter inch chips is what we're really working on, so.
Can you tell you from your sales tax, or are you gonna be able to do anything else after?
I, yeah.
Can't tell you? Probably not.
Probably not. But we'll, we'll reevaluate. Um, I know we met with Susan, I believe it was last week, um, and it's gonna be tight.
As you know, we have three roads, uh.
Yes.
Coming down 69.
Yep.
One of them, Mrs. Bailey lives on.
I hear about that every day.
That's why I don't come by your road.
Exactly.
With Williams up there by school.
Right? And then we have the one at Garland.
Garland, yeah. Yeah, we'll hear about that one all winter, I'm sure.
Yeah, so.
Maybe you can patch it up down there. I don't know what type of downer it was, but anyway. Tell Mrs. Bailey it's your fault.
Okay. Sounds good. Um, crusher had the belt for the oversized broke last Friday. Um, don't know whether something happened on our end when we were very first learning the machine to weaken it, or whether it's a bunch of use. But anyhow, we got another belt in. Dustin and I went to Humboldt yesterday, picked the belt up, got the belt on, the machine yesterday, and then, uh, two of us, wasn't quite enough to get it attached, but they got it detached first thing this morning, and they're, we're back to, um, crushing, so just give you a heads up on that. So we'll probably run again like we did last week, 11, 10 to 11 hour days to try and get these chips produced so we can, uh, get our asphalting done. With that said, uh, met with Buckley Powder last week. They do our blasting for us. Um, we're scheduled to go to Shepherd next, Shepherd Quarry. Um, I believe we're going to go to Shepherd Quarry, but just take the crusher with us. We won't need to, after meeting with Buckley, we're in agreeance that we won't need to do another blast there. We're gonna clean up what we have already there, which will give us more than our 40,000 tons or what have you.
Good idea.
Um, there's some larger rocks that are there that we're able to crush now that we couldn't with the other machine, so, um, and clean out the pit and, and get everything cleaned up, make a little more room, and, and produce some road rock there. When we get done with that, then we're gonna look at going to Beth and do another, another blast there.
Will we be able to get that this year, you think?
We're, yes.
Good. You know, District One doesn't need a lot of rock. See if he's listening. He was.
But anyhow, I think that will be the, the best for us, especially after we looked at our budget numbers last week. We kinda have room for one blast, and I think we'll be best suited if we go to Beth, so that way we make chips and, and, uh, road rock there, and we'll probably all have Beth cleaned up, but at Shepherd, we, there's enough material there that we can produce what we need to produce.
Uh, this is just myself, not speaking to the other duty commissioners, but when it's time to renew the Beth contract, we need to look updating that maybe.
Absolutely. Absolutely, I agree.
Been there a long time ago.
Yeah.
So I think we can do better.
Okay.
To make it better for the Beth family compared to the other quarries.
Right, right.
Okay.
I agree with that. Um, Onyx, they're scheduled, I know I keep saying next week, but that's what they keep telling us is next week, so, uh-huh, when they roll in, they roll in. That's all I can say at this point. I know, they say they're hung up on 36 Highway. I'm not for sure where 36 Highway is at, um, but anyhow, they're waiting on a contractor there, so we'll, uh, when they get here, they get here. Last week, we worked on our bean pad over at the landfill, just to give you a heads up on that, hold in quite a bit of clay to make the pad, and, and, uh, soon as we get that made, then we'll, um, get the composting going.
I hope that that, maybe the first year can get going, and hopefully take that extra revenue and pay that building off early. We hope.
Right.
We hope, you know, it's always a pipe dream to get out that early.
Right, so, uh, we were gonna work on it today, but Mother Nature had other plans for us, so we tried this morning, it's just a little too slick, so.
Yeah.
Last, uh, April, May, had the hailstorm, it was very spotty or what have you. Um, anyhow, we had a large hail at the shop. We had six vehicles that were damaged. Uh, got confirmation yesterday that we will be receiving a check for $18,918.36 on those, for the hail damage on those vehicles, so, um, just letting you know that. There's one vehicle that was a total loss, one of the Crown Vicks that we had, um, but anyhow, I just wanted to be upfront on that. I haven't heard anything on our roofs yet. I know they've been out to look at them, and I've sent another email back to K Camp to ask about them, so I know they all, every roof out there had hail damage when the contractor was there to look at them, so we'll see where we, where we're at with that. Um, Mr. Blythe, for you, the Culvert on Jayhawk between 115th and 120th, um, we are there today, are headed there today, so, um, Culvert crew was off last week on vacation, or we would've been there last week, but, um, anyhow, we will get that done. We have been hit at Public Works with sickness, so, um, have four off right now, and possibly another one or two that aren't feeling too well, so we'll just, uh, play by ear and take our precautions and, uh, and move forward, but I didn't want to let you know on that. And then next week, I have the KAC meeting, and Dustin and I will be attending that, so I will not, neither one of us will be here for your meeting next week, so.
I'll talk about that right after you here, so.
Okay.
Mrs. Marbury, get ahold of you.
Yes.
Okay.
And I sent her to see Ashley, so.
I'll give her your phone number.
Yep, yep.
I don't have anything for you. No, thank you.
Okay.
I've got something real quick.
Yep, all right.
Somebody sent me a text, maybe.
Okay.
Okay, so 215th Street.
Okay.
Um, up at Range Road, I think, uh, you go, you go west on Range Road.
Okay.
Just a couple hundred yards.
Okay.
West of the old highway, and he said, you know, you were telling me you, uh, people sprayed the road with that stuff to.
Right.
Go over to the dust.
Yes, the dust control.
Yeah, and then the negative effects are you can't really maintain it.
Right.
Well, he's complaining about, uh, massive potholes right there.
Okay.
I don't know.
We'll look at it.
What can be done there, but he said it's a pretty big issue.
Okay. 215th and Range, west.
Yep. Probably a couple hundred yards.
Dust control.
Uh, west of the highway.
Okay. Yep, I know right where we're at.
Yep.
And that's been about a couple years it's been there, so it's probably gonna need to go back to gravel and, uh.
Yeah, that's what he said.
Be tore up and we'll.
That's all I had.
Okay. Good?
Thank you.
All right.
Appreciate it.
Yep.
Okay, discussion of next week, October 18th, meeting, because we do have a KAC conference. I will not be here. I'll be out of town, so I guess.
Are you not going to?
I was, I canceled about two weeks ago.
Oh, you did?
Yeah. It, uh, had to do with opening day in Pheasant Country in North Dakota, I'm gonna be honest with you.
That's a problem.
Yeah, that's a big problem, folks, though. I really wanted to go this year, but, uh.
Well, I'll make a motion that we cancel next week's meeting, because I think I'm scheduled to go to that. I don't know if Nelson is or not.
We haven't signed up.
Yeah, I'm, I'm not sure if I can make it yet, but yes, I'm signed up for it.
So I make a, make a motion to cancel next week's meeting.
Second that.
In discussion, all in favor, aye? Lock in gas prices. Is that something we wanna do?
Yeah, well, I talked to some people about it, and what, can you give us the six month price again? Yeah.
Um, there's actually, he didn't give me a six month on that. He gave me a 12 month at $7.44, and a 24 month at $6.96.
On that personally, I would do the, the 12 month, because it, I mean, it probably, very likely it will go up, but we don't know. But I think that's worth going for. What about the jail and stuff?
That is for the courthouse and the jail.
Okay.
What is it today? Anybody know what it is today? I don't.
Eight something, I'm pretty sure.
Um, I don't know if we can get like local price, because the national price will be different.
Not how long for the hospital, but I didn't think you guys are interested in hospitals or anything.
No.
Okay.
So I would, um, can we get a, uh, can you get a updated price, like, how long does it take to get an updated price? Because the futures fell yesterday significantly.
Okay, I don't, I mean, he said it changes daily, so I'm gonna email him.
Oh, okay. Um, but I agree, they're probably, it's probably gonna go back up, but they, uh, they were off .31 cents yesterday, so.
Quite a bit. Yeah, it's, it's gonna go up.
But, yeah, it will, but right now, it's, it's dropping right now, so I'd get an updated and tell him that, you know, I mean, I, I guess.
And he said it changes daily, so he'll go with whatever.
I mean, my, my question would be, I would ask, if he comes back with this price, my question would be, okay, the futures clearly show a .31 cent drop, why aren't we getting that drop?
Yeah, that should be reflecting his price.
Yeah.
If it's lower than that, do you wanna lock in for the 12 months, or?
I'm okay with that.
Yeah, I'm okay.
Yeah.
744 or lower.
Okay.
Make a motion.
Yep.
Make a motion to allow Ashley, um, and County Clerk to lock in, uh, our natural gas price for the courthouse and the jail, if it's, uh, for a 12 month contract, um, at 744 or lower.
A second.
In discussion, all in favor, aye?
And the reason, I mean, on, local prices are different than national, so.
Okay, accounts payable process.
About commission room.
I'm sorry?
Commission room for election.
Oh, I'm sorry, yeah, I skipped one, didn't I? Yep.
We are going to start, want everyone to hear me. We are going to start on October 26th, early voting, and I would like to ask to use the commission room again. Um, it's just easiest, it's close to our office, it's close to the handicap entrance, and that would be on a Wednesday, um, so we would set up after that meeting that Tuesday. Um, I talked to Brian. I'm not sure, I think the TV will be blocked, but the camera would actually be above our voting booths. We don't move this table or anything on it, we use this table and set up around it, so we could possibly put the chairs in front of the voting booths and have an evening meeting here during early voting, if, if you'd like, or if you wanna hold it somewhere else, you know, we can do that, too. And then I would also ask that we do not have a commission meeting on November 8th, since that is election day.
So the 25th and the 1st, we would need to have a commission, our commission meeting somewhere else, basically?
The 25th would be fine, because we won't set up until after the commission meeting.
Oh, okay.
And we would start voting on the 26th.
So the 1st?
We move the chairs forward, or we can move to the foyer area, either one.
Okay.
I don't care.
Give it to the city, as far as that goes.
Yeah.
We'll make it work.
Okay.
We'll just know where we're supposed to be when we walk in the building.
Yeah.
How about that?
Ask Courtney to come in also. So the accounts pro, accounts payable process was brought up last week. Um, that is how it's been done as long as I've been here. I'm not saying that's right, wrong, but that's how it was done, so when that was brought up last week, that was the first we'd really heard about it, and I did some research, 'cause I wanna be in compliance. Those are the statutes that I found, um, on the state website. I talked to Justin about them. Um, one thing I was not aware of is by those statutes, the county counselor needs to approve those before they're presented to the commission for approval. Um, technically, I think you only have to approve them once a month. I don't like that option, because I would rather you look at them as we go. Um, I reached out to several other, I sent an all clerks email to all the other counties in Kansas, asking how they do their process. Um, I also, I know how it was done when Kendall was here, 'cause I did that process. Um, I reached out to Joanne Long as well, and talked to her about how the process that was done before that. Um, she's very knowledgeable, and I got her opinion, and what we came up with, um, is we would like to, since account, since payroll is an exemption, then the payroll liabilities would be an exemption as well. So what we would like to do is, on Monday morning, our mail comes early, so we would get Saturday's mail and Monday's mail on payroll week. We would enter those in, so by nine o'clock on Monday, we would have a report ran. Justin would stop by on Monday, and he would look at that, or we can email it to him, however he wants to do that. Once he reviews it and says that it's okay, then we would email it to all three of the commissioners, and we would not ask for your approval, it would just be for you to review, and we would have it on the agenda for the following day, so that way you've had time to review it. If you have any questions, you can ask, then you can approve it. Um, my understanding, most of the counties, they, a lot of them do approve it during a meeting, they don't approve, a lot of them don't make a motion. You're already approving it at meetings, so that would be up to you, whether you wanna make a motion to approve it, but, um, I think that would be work best for our office. I've talked to the other girls that process, or enter the vouchers for accounts payable. I've talked to Patty, who moves the money, um, so I, if that works for you guys, we'll try and start implementing that.
Works for me. Yeah, works for me.
I also. I just gave Susan the report. I think I showed the others a view. Courtney emailed a couple reports last week. That is actually a report that we're able to run. It shows in alphabetical order by vendor, but it's also by fund, and it has the description show, so it shows a lot of detail, but that is a report we're able to run prior to processing that, so that way you guys could review it before we actually process it. So if you wanna take anything out, review anything, have questions, we don't have to go backwards in the process.
That's, that's AMP?
Yes, accounts payable, yes.
And payroll?
Nope, that's just accounts payable. And then Courtney would email like an overtime report, like she normally does, and then on the following week, on a non-payroll week, we would have the books for you to actually sign the registers.
Okay.
So, I don't know, and I apologize, I had two staff members off last week, so I didn't really get to get with you to talk to it, but does that?
Okay.
There's, there's other ways you can do it, if you're interested in knowing that, um, it's just up to you guys how, how you wanna handle it.
Now, but.
Give this a shot for now. If it needs to be changed, we'll change it.
Yeah, and I mean, we're willing to change, I just wanna make it what works best for everyone, that way we don't have to change the meetings, they're still at the regular time, it worked for everyone that enters vouchers.
Does this work good for you, Susan, for numbers? Okay. And what about payroll? Are you gonna start sending it to all three commissioners? I mean, I get it now, the chairman.
Since payroll's an exemption, w- we can send it, and hopefully it would be ready for you guys to approve on Tuesday also, but.
I think that'd be great.
It's not always ready, if there's people leaving, and we have to do payouts, or we have new hires that we have to calculate, but since that's an exemption.
It's working fine like it is, but I thought these two guys might wanna see it also, so.
Yep, and that's, yeah, we'd be glad to do whatever.
Okay.
I just don't wanna like send it for approval from all three at the same time, 'cause I don't wanna violate anything, but if we send it just for you guys to review, there shouldn't be a problem with that.
The chairman reviews it, and we got the finance officer reviewing, is it Justin also review payroll?
Yeah, I have to have all three commissioners' signatures, and the county counselor and myself.
Can we see the book?
Yeah.
I mean, we gotta pay our employees.
Yeah, we gotta pay them.
Yeah.
I mean, we're watching if we like it or not, so, that's one of the things we can always borrow back, if we need to, so. Okay, thank you. Is that it, Chris? I wanna skip over you again.
Oh, I have one more thing.
This is kind of off the subject, but, and it's kind of for Susan, too, when we did the budget this year, we, everyone got a 3% raise, and so we are not having a one-time longevity payout, is that correct?
Correct.
Okay, I've had employees ask, and some were very upset that did not understand that, so I just wanted to clarify, so we can send an email out to let people know.
I just wanna make sure I was right. That was taken out last year. That was my understanding, I just.
I'd like to talk about that a little bit more later on.
Okay.
'Cause I wasn't totally aware it was taken out, to be honest with you. You probably told me, and it is, I'm not saying you didn't, but that's really a, a nice benefit to have for employees, so.
I think your cash balance would be too low to give it, but we can, we can watch that as we get closer to the end of the year.
Okay. I like first, I don't know how the other two, but I like to watch it and see if things improve, because that's something, that's really a very good bonus at Christmas time for the employees, especially if they're not getting a raise in 2023, so. Okay, I'll just watch that closely. Come in, Bobby.
How are you? I'm good for a Monday.
I understand.
He's back there.
Ah, sure.
Um, I asked to be put on the agenda today, uh, possibly to answer any questions the commission has, after watching last Tuesday's, uh, meeting and speaking with Commissioner Blythe, um, it was brought to my attention that somebody has some questions as far as operations of the jail, so I'm here to answer any questions that you guys may have about that specific incident, so that I could ease your guys' mind that my job performance is at the top, and I have documentation to back that up. So if you guys got any questions, please ask.
I really don't have any questions, it was just brought to our attention that we was holding prisoners or inmates over for a matter of days, where they could go to DOC, but it's a question if they should go out there, then come back, but I don't know the number, so I can't ask, I can't ask those questions, so.
So, here's what I did, um, when this was brought to my attention. I went from, um, actually, it'd be August, September-ish on, and I went clear through, um, the latter part of last year. There's 31 total inmates on here. Um, I can make you copies of this, I got some chicken scratch on the bottom, but, um, all, all of my dates, um, are in our JMS. Uh, the county attorney has access to the JMS, uh, so you can get the same results from their office. Um, but just, I'm just gonna pick a few out, just so that you guys could see, I explained this to Commissioner Blythe. Um, the inmates don't have very much, uh, right to privacy, all this is public information. Um, so I have, um, we'll just go with top of the list, he was sentenced on 810, I got the DOC transfer, uh, and he was gone on the 13th, six days. Um, so let me go back and explain what this is, so these are not incarcerated dates. They may be here for a year, two years, two months, one month, whatever. When they get sentenced to go to DOC, I write it on my board and the date, and I kinda keep a mental note that I have some people coming. So then what happens is, is how it used to, the journal entries, that's what's done, I have no control over that, that's prepared by the defense, and the state, and the judge. Once they all agree upon it, it's signed. I used to get that, fax that information to the state. That process has changed, and it changed, I think, four or five years ago. Now that paperwork goes to the district court, district court goes through it after they get it from the judge, district court office sends it to the state. When the state approves for that inmate to go to DOC, they send me an email, saying so-and-so's been approved, contact Captain Georges at the whatever. Now, DOC accepts inmates on Mondays, Tuesdays, Wednesdays, Thursdays, through, for the males, and that's at Eldorado at RDU. Tuesdays and Thursdays for the women at Topeka. If I get a journal entry on a Monday, or approval on a Monday, that does not mean that I can just take them out there, I have to call and get prior approval. If that week's filled up, I go to the next available date. My people have been instructed, since I have been the major and/or the jail administrator, that you take the first available date, we'll make it work to get them out of here. So that's how that process works. However, if an inmate has, um, another case, or they have a warrant that that has not been settled, and they have a, a bond or whatever, that inmate has not been released by the courts. So I could take them out there, and I couldn't, depending on the, the court, and I believe the gentleman, uh, that, that brought this all up, um, was Mr., um, yeah, Devin Vale. He had a court case, he was sentenced to DOC, he had another one coming up on 99. I kept him here for that, and, um, he was released on that, and then he got released from DOC three weeks later. So, I mean, potato, patato, uh, on that deal, but I have one, two, three current inmates awaiting for their journal entry or DOC approval, and all of them have pending cases with no bond warrants. So what happens is, is, or not, not all of them, I stand corrected, uh, some of them have bonds, but they still have warrants. Um, so what happens is, is a lot of times, is inmates, if they miss a court date, then there's a warrant put out for them, then there's a detainer. When a D, when an inmate's in DOC custody, if they have a warrant out of another jurisdiction or another state, that hinders their custody level. They can't get jobs, they can't do extracurricular activities, blah, 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 so they file a writ to come back to that jurisdiction and take care of that warrant. So sometimes they drag it out through court proceedings, I have no control over that. Um, just, um, we had to go pick up a, a female in Minnesota last mon, or last, towards the end of last year, um, and bring her back, 'cause she filed a writ. She was here, um, for six months before she went back, and as soon as she was sentenced, she was sentenced on our case on, um, person, 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 where's that? She was sentenced on our case on 1215. I got the paperwork on 15, but because she went back to Iowa, she went back to a federal prison, I transferred her out on 1217, two days later. So, I'm gonna shorten this up, just so that everybody knows, six days, six days, three days, three days, six days, four days, 11 days, two days, two days, three days, 15, see where I'm going with this? I'm getting them out of there pretty darn quick.
Yeah, sure.
So, um, I hate, hated to waste your time, but I figured I'd let you guys know.
We appreciate you coming up.
Yep. How things work, and if anybody has any questions, call me, I'd rather do it over a phone call than up here at a meeting.
John?
Thanks, Bobby.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you. Mr. John Lowry, EMS call update, please. Mr. John Lowry, EMS call update, please. Thank you.
So I was in Susan's office last week. Shared this with her, and she thought you all might like to know where we're at on our numbers. So, um, the first page, uh, the first column there is, uh, these are 911 calls that we actually transported a patient to the Fort Scott ER. That was 678. And transfers we've taken out of ER to Pittsburgh, 313. Transfers we've taken to other hospitals, that includes Nevada, Gerard, Kansas City area, Joplin, 124. We've flown 19 patients. Other, there's 63. If you turn to the second page, it will describe what other is. These are patients like, that we've taken in to the ER from a home, from the hos, uh, nursing home, that are bed bound, that need a way back home. Uh, we've done 63 of those. Dry runs, 603. I know that seems like a lot, but dry runs includes football standbys, rodeo standbys, Red Bull standby, search warrants standby for them. Patient refusals canceled on scene or canceled before we got on scene. And then 911 calls that were taken straight to another ER, uh, that was 63. We do our best to get the patients to the appropriate facility. These would be like people that are having a heart attack, people that like fractured hips. Um, there's a lot of people in the west part of the county that actually doctor over in Iowa, and we'll take them to, to Iowa Hospital. So altogether this year, as of September 30th at midnight, we had ran 1,863 calls.
That's a lot of calls.
I know this morning, the first call we ran, I believe, was number 59 for the month, so we're over 1,900 calls.
Yeah, that's, that's impressive. I, I wished it was zero. I mean, nobody was hurt or safe, but that's, yeah, that's very impressive numbers.
Um, the other thing, some good news, um, a couple of months ago, uh, the, we've referred to them as the boys, Austin and Trace. They're young, energetic. Uh, wanted to look at getting some workout equipment. Kind of milled around how to do that. Ended up going to Walmart, and they give out grants anywhere from $50 to $5,000. Two weeks ago, Emily, with Bourbon County Ready, we had to go through them to get it. Contacted me and said we had been awarded $3,500 to buy workout equipment. I've given that information to Susan, and then Shane's gonna get stuff ordered for us. Today, I believe it's 1:30? At 1:30, Bourbon County Ready, Susan, Walmart is gonna meet at the EMS station and present a check, and the paper's supposed to be there to take a picture.
That's great, that's great, so. And then boys need workout probably.
Anyway, any questions we can answer for you?
I know, speaking as a citizen, we appreciate what you do. I mean, it's your job stuff, and you guys do a fabulous job. I've heard wonderful stories about you, so thank you, so.
So, John, a quick question. Um, you said there's already been 59 calls for October?
Yes. So we're over 1,900 for the year.
Okay.
All right, thank you for coming up.
Thanks.
All right, thank you. Have a good day.
You too.
Okay, Mr. Shane Walker, bid opening for North Sidewalk and Parking Areas.
I never heard from anybody, but did we get the ad's action?
I did, I haven't received it.
Nobody bid on it? That's it.
The mailbox outside?
We, we check our mail every day out there.
So yeah.
Okay.
And see, maybe they sent them to him, but he's not even here, so.
Well.
It's not till 10 o'clock, is it?
Oh yeah, it's 10 o'clock.
Oh, 10, we're early.
Yeah.
Okay.
I'll call him and double check though.
We'll come back at 10 o'clock. We gotta make a motion, come back Clifton at 10.
We, we'll make, I mean, I guess.
I don't know. We won't be here at 10 either. We'll probably have an executive session, so we can put it at the tail end of the meeting.
Make a motion to move the bid opening for North Sidewalk and Parking Area to the end of the meeting.
There, a second.
Second.
In discussion. All in favor? Aye. Okay, I'm requesting executive session. There will, there will be two total. We'll go in, I'd like to go in Clifton and, first one for seven minutes, and come back out and go in a longer one. I want to, two commissioners, three commissioners only, the first one for seven minutes, so.
Okay. Let me read it off.
Yep, if you would please. I'd put my glasses, I'd put my glasses on.
Make a motion, go into executive session, case A 754319B1, to discuss personal matters of individual and elected personnel to protect their privacy. Be for seven minutes. Um, we return here at, uh, 9:42.
Second.
Three commissioners only, seven minutes.
Second.
In discussion. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Go Susan's office. Can we get in the back?
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
If you'd like to have one more executive session, the three commissioners and Shane Walker for 30 minutes.
Thirty? Okay. Make a motion to go into executive session, case A 75 dash 43-19B1 to discuss personal matters of individual or non-impacted privacy, job duties. Be for 30 minutes. Be the three commissioners, Shane Walker. So would that be nine?
Ten fourteen.
Ten fourteen, yeah. Return here at ten fourteen.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Make a motion to come back in regular session, no action.
Second.
Any discussion, all in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Going to take a five minute break and I'm going back into session. Five minute break.
Five minute break. I would say it's Harris.
Yeah, because nobody wrote, who wrote?
That's Harris. I would bet money if you ask Brian, that's Harris' hand.
I just, like I said, I was going through some stuff and I saw that. Of course, I'm immediately trying to figure out what it has to do with floodplain because it was a batch of floodplain stuff. And I just saw there, you know, I saw that and I was like, hey. It's pretty much exactly what you told me.
Yeah.
But what state championship, or what, two state teams, what was that?
Basketball.
Basketball. Okay. I need to research that a little bit more because that's what I like to do. I mean, seriously.
They, yeah, they were the Hugers of Kansas.
Was, was Leland on that team?
Leland.
Who?
He might have been on the first one.
Because I know Leland was on a team that was real good, you know.
Of course, Leland.
That was Prescott.
Yeah, Leland might have been a freshman.
Oh, he was Prescott. You're right.
He had the state scoring record at one time.
I miss Leland.
Leland was heck of a teacher too.
He was good, man.
Honor, he taught me.
He wasn't good.
He was my English teacher.
You messed up taking it easy on us. Everything going good for you?
Yeah, yeah. You know, my cancer numbers come down.
Good.
So that was a plus.
Yeah.
Yeah. Didn't come down a lot, but it come down more than once three months ago. So that's a plus.
Yeah. Did the thing, I got to work.
Yeah, I'm gonna get out of here. You guys have a good day.
Yeah, dude, I got something.
Might be on my quick, I forgot.
Just wouldn't have mentioned it right there. I wouldn't have showed up for the meeting, so. Yeah. Oh, yeah? That one Colours next to Deli Donuts, that thing hit my back finger, scratched it. They run the videos, I didn't do it. I said, yeah, I did, my wife was with me. Okay. I don't know if I pulled in her wrong or slipped off the trap, I don't know. But anyway, they denied it, so. Is that one we were building next to Wendy's, another Colours?
Pretty interesting, man.
Yeah. They had, um.
Nelson's back row. I'm just glad that I found it, so you can have it.
They had some good stories about it there.
I can't imagine, especially with both of them together.
Yeah. Yeah. No, it wasn't always good.
Okay. We'll go back in session.
I appreciate that, Brian.
Oh, no problem.
What do you think, ten minutes?
Thank you.
Make a motion to go to executive session. KSA seventy-five forty-three nineteen B-one to discuss personal matters of individual non-elected personnel to protect their privacy. Three commissioners, Shane Walker, be for ten minutes. We return here at ten twenty-nine. Second.
Any discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Make a motion to resume normal session in this room. No action.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
Justin.
Justin Meeks. We should sleep.
I'm always going. Mr. County Counsel.
Good morning, Commissioners. Just wanted to do a quick update on the tax sale and then we'll have to go into executive session for five minutes with, we can do it for three maybe because I think we have a good baseline with this particular legal document.
If it's about the contract, we'll probably do it for a little longer.
Okay. Five, do a little longer than that. It's good. It's good to know. The tax sale is this Thursday. We have a meeting this afternoon with Laura Holdridge, Matt and Pat, Patty Love. We've got our list. See, people are still redeeming. Obviously, we've seen multiple phone calls. The sale should hopefully be pretty quick based off the specials that are on the City of Fort Scott properties. We're going to try something a little different this time. And then we were getting some abstracts from the title company. It's slow going because they're busy, but we'll start gearing up for the next sale next year. We're definitely going to have two, possibly three next year. So the land bank, Craig Campbell, has been excellent to work with. It's going, I think, really well with that. And hopefully, you know, a year or two from now, that'll bear fruit. So I think the the numbers are compressing, which is exactly what we wanted. The 2018 properties are smaller than the 2017 and 2016. So that's a really good sign. That means that, you know, we're getting into the right places and people are interested in. We have multiple people that are going to be probably working with the land bank to utilize those properties. And I also know that there's some people that are really interested in possibly, I don't want to go too far down this, but possibly with the larger lots, the hundred-foot lots, not the 50, but the hundred-foot lots about possibly putting in some spec homes.
Right.
So hopefully that happens too. So just kind of giving an update. I'll let you guys know what happens with the sale. I don't think we're going to raise the kind of income that we had at the last sale. That was probably once in a, once, once ever, actually. I think this time a lot of those properties are going to dump into the land bank.
Okay. Maybe speak just for the public sake, the outliers of this 2016 and 17 that didn't get put on.
Yeah, the outliers. Yeah, there's, you know, I call them, you know, the outliers is a great name for them. They're, they're like a really good example of an outlier is a property in town that sold with an IRS tax sale. And so there are a lot of people that called about that. And so obviously, the IRS trumps Bourbon County. So with that property, it's sold in a tax sale for the IRS. And then recently, that person who bought that sale came in and redeemed that property. So that obviously isn't going to be on the tax file for a lot of reasons, but that's one of those. And then there's some other ones that I'm aware of, like right now, that are currently in litigation. And so, you know, litigation puts a hold on those sales. And so a couple of years back, let's say that property was in litigation. Now it's not. So we can put it on the next sale. And a lot of those outliers are being cleaned up and put on the sale in late March or April, depending on how the abstracts go. So there's lots of reasons why properties are on and off. It's very fluid. I mean, as of, you know, Thursday morning at 8:45, someone could come in and redeem a property and it will be, it's taken off the sale. And that's happened, actually. Or like the last sale, we realized that a property had actually been scraped. It was actually being scraped that day. And so we didn't have the new specials attached to that property. And so we couldn't sell it that day because we, we didn't have the new, the new amounts that cost to tear down that property. So there's four really good examples, I think. I will have, I need to ask the Commissioner, do we want Rob in this, this executive session?
Doesn't need to be.
Okay. So it would just be the three Commissioners and myself for however long you want. It's a legal contract.
Make a motion.
And there will be action when we come out, I hope.
Make a motion, maybe not. No, I'm just kidding. Who knows?
For the record, if there's, if there's no action.
There's three of us.
Yeah, I know. If there is no action after this one, I will probably just go for the day and come back next week, just FYI. Yeah.
Make a motion, KSA 754319B2, for consultation with attorney for the public body or agency, which would be deemed privileged in the attorney-client relationship dealing with contracts. Be three Commissioners, County Councilor Meeks. It'd be for, go ahead and do it for 10 minutes. We'll return here at 10:45.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Aye.
Make a motion to resume normal, our normal meeting with action.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I make a motion to allow Chairman Harris to sign a real estate purchase agreement between the county, Bourbon County, and Community Health Center of Southeast Kansas, known as CHC Sek. For the legal description, it's a real estate consists of 7.3 acres, more or less of vacant land and pavement containing a parking lot and helicopter pad on 2800 block of South Horton Road, Fort Scott, Bourbon County, Kansas, and more thoroughly described as follows. Lot 1 Mercy Health Systems of Kansas, a subdivision in the city of Fort Scott, Bourbon County, Kansas. So it's the southwest corner, basically, of the hospital land for a purchase price of $10 and forgiveness of lease payments described through July 1st through December 31st, 2022.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I make a motion to, I make a motion to allow Ashley Shelton, County Clerk, to write a check for $10 and 0 cents to CHC Sek to be delivered at the closing with County Councilor Meeks.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And Ashley, this, this document will become public record. So, you know, if anybody wants it, it can, you can disseminate it that way. It hasn't been signed by CHC yet, but if anybody wants it pre-signed, they can take a look at it. And there was a question about the helipad. It, it was, it's part of the agreement. So.
As I say, I would, in past experience, they worked for a place, they built some land, they bought some land for helipad. And F A was saying, well, flying angles didn't work on that. I was just, you want to check out flying angles?
Yeah, it's the same. It's the same helipad that's been there for, it's not a different, it's not a new helipad. It's this one that existed. Yeah, yeah, yeah. It's, yeah, I know. We know. It's, yeah, it's the same one that's been there forever. Oh, it's all right.
He made a motion. Okay.
Yep.
Very good.
All in favor?
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Yeah, we're done.
Okay.
And you have our direction to get this closed as soon as possible.
Sure.
By next week if possible.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Ms. Susan Bancroft, Chief Financial Officer, comments, please. Okay. Shane, have anything? Okay. Public comment section.
We do have someone waiting to do bid opening, so maybe you might want to do that before.
Did we get any bids?
Yeah.
We got bid. Okay.
Okay, I make a motion to move the bid openings again to before public comment.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
We'll open one, Cliff, to the.
Yeah, doesn't matter.
Open one.
Okay, I'll go first, I guess.
Can I work this out?
This is from Rogers and Sons Concrete. And it's for a bid of ninety-three thousand, seven hundred and twenty-six dollars and fifty cents. Just so everybody's aware, he did put a five percent of bid cashier's check that I'm not, I've never seen one of those in a bid packet before, so I'm not sure why he did that.
What was the amount?
Ninety-three, seven, twenty-six, fifty.
Okay, did he give a estimated time of completion?
Six, fifty. Uh, he didn't. Uh, he might have in here somewhere.
Who do you have, Nelson?
He did not. Ninety, fully complete the project within ninety working days of our acceptance, if we, if we accept it.
I can't even read what, what they've got written there. What's the name of that company?
Over and over?
Over and over, okay. Well, their bid is for a hundred and thirty-seven thousand, three hundred and forty-eight dollars. So that's quite a bit more.
Mm-hmm.
And, but they did, here they stipulated that they'd have it done within ninety days.
Yeah, and this one says the same.
Okay.
So, anyway.
That's a, that's a big difference.
Yep, huge difference. So I'm going to.
Do you want him to look over the best before?
Who is it?
Check the, he's your engineer.
Oh, um, well, I'm not, I mean, I, I, I'm personally not gonna, I'm, I mean, if we vote on this, I'm voting no on both of them personally, so I don't think there's any reason to look over.
I'm going to vote no at that price. I think we're gonna have to look in-house or something, okay?
I mean.
No, it's too much, so, I mean, it might be well worth it, but we can't.
So everybody's.
I just, well, there's a huge difference between the two bids, so I'm like.
Yeah, yeah. Well, one's local, and I don't know who over who for it.
I'd ask to go into executive session for three minutes to discuss legal issues, possible liability.
Okay.
The three commissioners and myself. Sorry, I just gotta, gotta talk about one thing before.
Okay.
So, hey, I'm concerned that there's just a check sitting here, so I'm putting it back in the envelope and giving it back to our clerk.
Did they pay us to do the work? That's awesome.
They paid five percent of the bid. That's going back to the clerk.
I'm handling it, sir. All right. You're in charge, is Jeff.
Yeah, three minutes.
Three minutes?
Possible liability issues.
Takes longer to.
About five, those two, because it takes a long time to walk, but it, it's true.
And we make sure the door's unlocked, too.
Yeah, I'll go check on the house.
Okay.
Make a motion to go into executive session for KSA seventy-five, forty-three, nineteen, B two, for consultation with attorney for the public, by their institution to be privileged in the attorney-client relationship dealing with liability. We're gonna do it for five minutes. We return here at ten fifty-eight, I guess.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Three commissioners and justices.
Three commissioners and justices.
No, I was gonna say, they're probably still older.
Oh.
I guess all we wanna talk.
I didn't hear a great.
Do I need to stick where I'm around?
No, thank you, David. Was that live while we were outside?
Yeah.
Was that live?
Yes.
Okay, okay. So we can go back and look and see what occurred while we were out?
Absolutely.
Can you do that now?
Jimmy already has it.
I know, but.
Yes, after the, I'll be able to do that. I mean, once it, it'd be a YouTube thing, you know how they have their drill light?
Yeah, but you can leave it on YouTube.
Oh, yeah.
So make a motion to table the parking lot. We can, uh, for two weeks.
Second.
Any further public comment? No, the public can speak.
No, I'm ready to go home.
I'm not that important.
Yeah, the only comment I have, commissioners need to know it's out there, is my daughter, you know, she, she is on her phone and stuff and she found this and she goes, I can't believe that. And, and one of the things is talking about putting a fuel pot or something out there for the sheriff's department. And they're saying, well, the reason we're not gonna do it is because it's gonna cost four hundred thousand dollars. And I'm like, nah, the county's on top of that. I mean, it don't cost that much to put them out there. And I told her, I said, that's false. The county will take care of it.
Thank you.
I think there was another gentleman wanting to speak to that, he maybe hasn't left. He was, he's out there already.
Okay.
And you know, again, I mean, there's been a lot of things, so, it's two years we've had a pod here, the operators stay there, get them whole. So that's, that's supposed to, I was thinking, it's about, everybody here, okay? We get a time, open, close, and not having those, speak, we got the next day or two of that, I don't know, that's, yeah, probably my best.
I've been like two years, I've been cold since March this sixth. I don't have this, I got, let's see, I got a pretty, like, a thousand, ten thousand dollars set waiting right now, just, I'm gonna waste my time to do it. I said, I guess, I mean, I don't, what are we gonna look at again?
We'll have to die test the, see if that's great water coming out of, out of that.
Okay, last time these guys do, they're gonna do the grade test, when the state came and said, I'll make you done, it was forty-five days later before I got done. I don't have, I, I'm not waiting forty-five days. Okay? I mean, we gotta get more faster.
Please, I don't have a lot of great questions.
And then a decision made and something moving, okay?
We'll die test it and then it shows up with the dags coming out of it, and that, that.
We need to go where the, why the water's coming out of it. You've got to find something. I mean, who else has got water running out of the drains, their foundation drains? If you find any, anybody, I'll buy you the last for a buck, okay? Okay, I'm, I'm sorry. This is beyond reasonable at this point. Okay, thank you.
You looked up everybody's going?
I have some hand wash, so I probably.
It probably already wet though, right?
No, I was gonna say, they're probably still older grass.
Oh.
I guess all we wanna talk, I didn't hear a great.
Do I need to stick where I'm around?
No, thank you, David. Uh. Was that live while we were outside?
Yes.
Was that live?
The meeting was over.
Okay, okay. So we can go back and look and see what occurred while we were out?
Absolutely.
Can you do that now?
Jimmy already has it.
I know, but.
Yes, after the, I'll be able to do that. I mean, once it, it'd be a YouTube thing, you know how they have their drill light?
Yeah, but you can leave it on YouTube.
Oh, yeah, it'll be there.
So make a motion to table the, the parking lot. We can, uh, for two weeks.
Second.
In discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Was that live while we were outside?
Yes.
Was that live?
The meeting was over.
Okay, okay. So we can go back and look and see what occurred while we were out?
Absolutely.
Can you do that now?
Jimmy already has it.
I know, but.
Yes, after the, I'll be able to do that. I mean, once it, it'd be a YouTube thing, you know how they have their drill light?
Yeah, but you can leave it on YouTube.
Oh, yeah, it'll be there.
So make a motion to table the, the parking lot. We can, uh, for two weeks.
Second.
In discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any further public comment?
Now the public can speak.
No, I'm ready to go home. So, I'm not that important.
Again?
Yeah, the only comment I have, commissioners need to know it's out there, is my daughter, you know, she, she is on her phone and stuff and she found this and she goes, I can't believe that. And, and one of the things is talking about putting a fuel pot or something out there for the sheriff's department. And they're saying, well, the reason we're not gonna do it is because it's gonna cost four hundred thousand dollars. And I'm like, nah, the county's on top of that. I mean, it don't cost that much to put them out there.
No.
And I told her, I said, that's false. The county will take care of it.
Thank you.
I think there was another gentleman wanting to speak to that, he maybe hasn't left there. He was, if he's out there, I'll already. Nope, I don't see him, so.
Okay.
We're done.
And you? You got nothing?
No, I.
Commissioner.
I don't know, you got anything?
Yeah, she wants to go home.
Yeah.
Yes, I heard her say that.
Lunch, 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 so.
Okay, I guess we're done.
I got a commission comment.
Yeah.
Oh, commission comment, oh, you got something. You gonna wear us out, huh?
Yeah, okay, so the accounts payable, I would like, and I guess Justin needs to be here, 'cause, where'd he go?
I'm right here.
Oh, sorry.
It's okay.
Sitting right there.
It's hard to see.
I would like to go over every single thing in accounts payable and find out what's state mandated for us to pay or federally mandated for us to pay and what's not. And we need a list of everything that is our choice, everything that we don't have to pay, we need a list of, 'cause we need to reevaluate whether we want that or need that. Because if we don't have enough money to fix our parking lot, then we need to stop doling out money in other places, you know?
Well, and I agree with that.
We haven't had a good meeting in a while.
Why, why do we look at other department elected officials?
I don't think that's what he's saying.
No, I'm, I'm not saying that.
Why do we, why do we? Patty, we can't tell Patty what to spend.
That's not even what I'm talking about. There's, if you go look at the accounts payable, there's sheet after sheet after sheet of money that's going places, and I just wanna know.
Well, there is, I mean, there is a fund that would be able to be used for this. I mean, the sales tax for the jail, part of that election process allowed for capital improvements to this, this structure, and that would include that. So that, that's one option. The other things I think you're talking about are like, I don't wanna name anything specifically, but just the money that the county gives to different organizations.
A whole bunch of different organizations.
I mean, it, unfortunately, I mean, it's not as much as you think. I mean, the, the general fund is highly, I mean, it's highly controlled and the, the money goes where it goes. But I, I do know at least a couple of funds that are probably, if they all add up to maybe like twenty, twenty-five thousand that is given by the county to things that aren't statutorily mandated. Like, we found out recently that one of the, one of the organizations, I think at the last meeting, so it's public record, you know, the Agency for Aging, that's, that's by statute. The Kansas, Southeast Kansas Mental Health, that's by statute. I mean, so there are things that you have to fund, statutorily.
Is there, and are you the best guy to go to to see what's statutorily required?
Statutorily, Susan's good at this, too, 'cause it's, I mean, she's your CFO.
I guess I wanna get a list of everything that is not required, so we can decide whether we wanna keep paying for it or not.
Sure, and that, that's a great Susan question.
Okay.
And I can help, too, but I'm just saying.
My point I was trying to get across, why would I spend thirty minutes looking at the sheriff's department bills? And I can't say no anyway. Why would I waste thirty minutes?
And that's, that's not the sheriff's office, not even what I'm talking about.
Well, I know, but in general, half what you're looking at, we don't have any vote on it anyway. So why, why waste our time?
We'll just find out what we do have control over.
Right.
And I would say, our last department head meeting that we had, that was one of the things that we discussed was waste the same money. I know it's not a lot of money, but we talked about mileage for salary people, we talked about coal and water. I mean, that's small, but it all adds up to something. So, I mean, those are things that we discussed in the department head meeting, and waste the same money also.
Yeah, there's a, there's a huge difference between, well, huge is the wrong word. There is a definite difference between an elected official's budget and the budgets that the commission controls. I think that's what commissioners is talking about, is the things that you spend that are.
In our control.
In control of, that are outside of maybe Rowan Bridge, 'cause there's some statutory stuff there. I mean, statutory's the wrong word again, but sales tax that were voted on that are, you have to spend money on.
And I don't know, that's why I wanna find out, but I, I'm gonna say it's over fifty thousand dollars easily of, of stuff that we're spending and we have the option to cut it off.
It could be close to that, but you're, you're gonna cause, you know, for every action, there's a reaction.
Yep.
So, I mean, that's one of the things that I think chairman's talked about a lot, is, you know, what services are people willing to give up? And some of those things that you're talking about are, I mean, they're good service, I mean, the fair is the one that comes to the mind almost instantly. You know, we give somebody like four or five thousand dollars to the fair every year. I'm not to name names again, but just, there's things like that that are not statutorily driven.
I think even if it might, I mean, I'm not saying we're gonna cut everything, we just need to evaluate it, 'cause even if it's gonna make some people upset, in our circumstance that we've got now, we're gonna have to make some people, be willing to upset some people.
Sure, and being revenue neutral, you have to make some tough decisions. You guys didn't raise taxes, so your, your costs go up and your revenues stay neutral. It's, you got some decision, we've been talking about that for a long time.
I mean, the, our money, the biggest priority is making our, our offices run smoothly and getting people the training they need and, and things like that. Any extracurricular stuff, I don't know if we got money for that right now.
Sure, no, that's, that's great. Well, I think Susan's the starting point, and then anything that we need to go back and back, backtrack to see statutorily, 'cause there are things that we have to fund.
Absolutely.
By statute. Mental health, elderly, things like that, we have to by statute. It's like one, like one mill, something like that, so. I can pull those statutes up if need be, but.
Yep.
Yeah.
I make a, during commission comment here, make a motion that the three commissioners can attend department head meetings and are, would like to be told when those department heads' meetings are, informed of that. And just, and no action would be taken there by the commission.
If more than one commissioner's gonna attend those department head meetings, it becomes an open meeting. So just FYI, Ashley would have to actually publish, if all, if two, two or more commissioners are there, Ashley will have to publish it as an actual meeting. It has to be put, people on notice that it's a meeting, 'cause you guys are gonna be discussing, absolutely discussing county business.
What we could do is an act one.
One, one of you can go and there'd be no.
And they can alternate.
Yeah, but if two, two or more go, that would be a meeting.
Yeah.
Okay, what is alternator then?
We'll alternate, so my motion includes that we will alternate commissioners at the department head meetings, but we would like to know when they are. Actually, we expect that.
I second that.
In discussion. All in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, I make a motion to adjourn.
I got one thing.
Don't accept it.
I would just like to publicly encourage other elected officials in all departments to do everything we can to get the funds, to make sure our people are properly trained in all areas that they're responsible for. We have to, well, we have a lot of new people and.
We have to run our ship tight.
Yeah, run a tight ship, and that takes training. So I'm encouraging Ashley, Patty, all other department, or elected officials, please get your people the training we need, and we'll just have a better working environment.
Yep.
And let us know, let us know if you need funding for that.
Yep.
We'll find the money. If you need to train, we'll find it. Okay, now I'm ready to motion for adjourn.
Make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor, aye?
Aye.